Thank you, Philip. Now we have a presentation from the Children's Aid Society. I'm sorry, I don't know your names, but come on up and...
I'll just, I'll start a little bit and then they can continue with more detailed introductions. This is Sarah Jonas and Lucas Weinstein. We're really lucky to have them with us this evening. They also had an opportunity to spend some time with Cindy Montero and her staff yesterday. And I hope this generates a really good conversation with you this evening, and I'll let them take it from here.
Thank you, Roy. So yes, as Roy said, I'm Lucas Weinstein, Sarah Jonas, and we are from the Children's Aid Society in New York City, more specifically the National Center for Community Schools, which is a part of the Children's Aid Society. At the Children's Aid Society, we've been working on community schools for over 20 years now. In New York City, that's where we started our first schools, and we have 16 community schools right now in New York City. Through our work at the National Center, we work with community school initiatives all around the country. So this is one of the initiatives that we've been working with. So, you know, we want to say thank you for having us here today. And what we want to do really is just give you a little bit of insight into what community schools are for us, how they fit into your work here. So as I said, we've been coming out here for a few years. Actually, my first time was most recently in August when I came out with Sarah. And during that time, we were able to meet with the superintendent and her cabinet and do some work around community schools, visioning activities, what the Emeryville Center for Community Life can look like within this strategy, and really just a little bit of visioning and starting to think about how the overall community strategy fits into the work that you're doing here in Emeryville. So, you know, this is really why we're here today, to try to help you folks gain a better understanding of our strategy for community schools and have a discussion about how that can apply to the overall Emeryville Center for Community Life, which is really a much broader strategy for reaching out into the community as a whole. When we talk about community schools, we like to kind of start with this cartoon very often. And, you know, for me, what I see here is a child coming to school. And we know that kids who come into our schools carry with them certain issues that are sometimes getting in the way of them being able to be successful academically. So you'll see here sickness, hunger, homelessness. These are some of the issues, and there's plenty of other issues. And so what else we see here is maybe another student looking at this kid saying, "I'm going to stay away from him, he's got issues," right? "I have to back off." And what we like to say is maybe that's a principal there just kind of staring, a little bit of a blank stare, like, "Well, what do I do with this? I'm here to educate kids, not to be a social worker, not to be a doctor, not to work on homelessness issues and things like that." The community school strategy works to try to break down those barriers, to get rid of the barriers so that kids, families, communities can be more successful. You know, this can also apply, I think, in your terms. It doesn't have to be a child. It can be a senior citizen who's there who has a lot of issues that they need assistance with. It could be a child who's in early childhood programs, the same thing, who's coming with baggage that we need to help resolve in order for them to be successful academically. So I think the cartoon can be read in many different ways. The strategy really is, you know, an easy way to explain it is extended hours, extended services, extended relationships. The swinging door, when we talk about that, it means that we bring a lot of programs and services into our school, but we also reach out into the community. And the community school strategy is not just about changing, affecting one child at a time. And you'll see, I'll talk about this a little bit more, but it's really more about, you know, we know that every child has a family, and every family lives in a community. And if we don't do deeper work within the community to affect change, then there's going to be new kids coming in with the same issues or different issues, but issues, right? And the strategy is really about affecting change on an individual level, but also on a broader level, so that we don't have that pipeline continuing to flow, and really to bring communities closer together. So we'd like to talk about our work in terms of our developmental triangle. And in that, the child, and now this is really talking about it from a community schools perspective, because that is mostly the work that we do. I mean, it's bigger than just a school, but the work that you're doing here with the Emeryville Center for Community Life, you know, is even bigger. But we talk about it with the child at the center, because that's our focus, is helping children. Now, like I said, around that child, there is a family, and we try to work with the whole family. Because like I said, if we just help that child, then we're not helping the family, you know, improve their situation, and then beyond that, not helping the community as a whole. Come together around education, come together around program services, about quality of life issues. And that's really where we see the Center for Community Life fitting into this. So when we talk about community schools, you know, our main focus is academic outcomes for kids. So core instructional program is always really important. And that's driven, in our case, say, in New York City, we're partners with the Department of Education. We don't run the academic end of things. We run a lot of other things, but everything is in support of helping kids achieve better academic outcomes. On the right side are the expanded learning opportunities. And that could be, you know, it can be after-school programs, before-school programs. It can be adult ed, it can be early childhood programs, anything that can help push the academic performance of kids. And then on the bottom are the support services, so mental health, medical, dental, vision services, things like that. A lot of our schools, we have school-based health centers within the schools. If we don't have school-based health centers within the schools, we ensure that there's providers in the communities that we can access, that we take kids to, we take families to, we connect them. So it's not just about connecting the kids to all of these things. It's really about connecting the whole family, about making these things available to the community. Our community schools are really designed to be a hub in the community. It's really putting a community center into a school. You know, schools are, public schools are public buildings. And we want them to be accessed and utilized by the community. And it's about opening the doors, it's about bringing the resources of the community into the school to serve all members of the community, kids, families, you know, adults alike. And it's also about reaching out into the community. You know, people in the community should know what our school is. They should know our kids. Our kids should know the business owners, you know. They should want our kids to be their customers. We should want to bring them in to work with our students, to work with our families. So it's really a broad vision. And you'll see on each of the vertices of the triangle is the circle. So we like to talk about that. That's our community school director. In each of our schools, we have what we call a community school director. And what that is, that's a person who ensures that there's communication going on between all three sides of the triangle. And not just communication, but making sure, for example, that expanded learning opportunities. If we have after-school programs, we want to ensure that they're connected to what's going on in the school day, you know, because otherwise, we're not really going to be able to affect the academic outcomes of our kids. There has to be not just communication, but real work together to tie these things together. At the same time, comprehensive support services. Say there's mental health services in a school. We want to ensure that there's communication between the providers, the classroom teachers, so that it's not like you send a kid out to be fixed, and then they come back and they're all better. Teachers have to be involved in that and understand what's going on with the children. At the same time, we want to involve the family in that. We want to connect them to resources in the community. It's not about doing everything right there. It's really about bringing the whole family, the whole community together to meet the needs of our kids, of our families, and of the community as a whole. So that's really a look at what our strategy is at the Children's Aid Society. And we're going to continue the conversation to talk about how it fits in with Emeryville, what the work you're doing here in Emeryville.
Great. So we like to talk, so I'm Sarah Jonas, nice to meet everyone tonight. We talk about community schools, the power of community schools, as being able to free teachers to teach and students to learn. And what we mean by that is that when the non-academic needs of students and families are being met, then teachers are free to focus on their core work, which is to teach, you know, to instruct children, to, you know, to deliver content to children. Likewise, when young people have their needs met, be they mental health, health needs, you know, other types of challenges they may be facing, they're able to focus on their core work in school, which is to show up each day on time and learn, you know, to become engaged as learners and be able to take advantage of that core instructional program that's being delivered to them. And here in Emeryville, in terms of the Emeryville Center for Community Life, you could even add in here that, you know, the ECL would free teachers to teach, students to learn, and for example, city services, you know, community services folks to focus on their core work of delivering high-quality programs and services to seniors, to students, to community members. So that would be, you know, a piece of the work for you here as well. So some of the key program components of a community school strategy, and again, these are things you'll find not only, for example, at the Children's Aid Society in our community schools in New York City, but at community schools all across the country. And as Lucas said, this is an initiative that's taken hold across the country in many school districts and communities all across the United States. So some of the things you're likely to see include expanded learning opportunities. Lucas spoke a little bit about those kinds of after-school programs, Saturday programs, summer programs, you know, those kinds of things, family engagement, so all kinds of deep engagement opportunities for families to really become connected to their school and community. Adult education and recreation, medical, dental, mental health and social services, early childhood programs, and community and economic development. So a community school, when it's successful, again, it's serving not only the needs of the students and families in that school, but it really helps strengthen a community as a whole. And again, a community school both, you know, fills in gaps and needs where there are challenges, but it also draws on the assets and strengths of the community and sort of gives an outlet for the community to become, to bring those strengths and assets to the school, be it students, their families, or other community members. So communities become stronger, healthier, safer, vibrant places for people to live and work and learn. I mentioned community schools as a national movement, so this is just a little bit about that. You know, and as community schools have grown, you know, they started with sort of individual schools in districts across the country. Then communities started saying, you know, "This is a good thing, we want more of these." So districts began committing to having multiple community schools in their district. And out of that, what's grown is, as you know, I'm sure people here are aware, initiatives like Promise Neighborhoods and things that are, you know, where whole neighborhoods say, you know, "We want to strengthen, we want our neighborhood to be stronger and healthier." And so we're going to put community schools, you know, the schools in our neighborhood are going to be community schools, and the way we work as a whole is going to be in this more integrated, coordinated approach. And that's very similar to what you're doing here. And some results of community schools initiatives. So as Lucas said, this community school's work has been going on in New York City with Children's Aid for 20 years. And around the country, again, there's been a, you know, a good history of community schools initiatives to this point where we've been able to see some really good outcomes. And those include not only improved academic performance for students in community schools, but also improved student and teacher attendance. So we found that in community schools, teachers come to school more regularly as well. And when we've, you know, looked into that, we found that it's because when teachers feel like students and families' needs are being met, they're able, again, to focus on their core work of teaching and be able to just really enjoy, you know, what they came to do and be able to give that their full focus. Reduced dropout rates, higher graduation rates, improved student behavior, greater parent engagement, student leadership really soars, and again, neighborhoods become stronger, healthier, more vibrant places for everyone. So, you know, the connection again between the community school strategy and the ECL is that within the ECL, community schools here is both your strategy for the K-12 education. So community schools is both the strategy through which educational services will be, you know, designed, delivered, envisioned within the schools themselves, but also, community schools is really a strategy for the larger ECL. And again, you know, because community schools, remember, sort of the points, the vertices of that triangle are all about the connection, the coordination and alignment of those services and supports. And here in the ECL, that's very much the vision that we understand that you're working towards, is again, this sort of coordinated, integrated approach to services and supports for families and community members and children. Community schools is not just a feel-good idea, although that's something that we're, you know, we feel like it resonates for a lot of people, it's sort of making sense on an intuitive level. But also, community schools is a good investment. And this is something that we recently were part of a study with the Finance Project, a social return on investment study. And the study found that there was a 10-to-1 return for elementary schools that became community schools and a 14-to-1 return for middle schools. So community schools makes good sense financially as well for schools and for communities. And we actually, we brought a few copies of that report. We're happy to make those available to anyone here who's interested. And lastly, we like to say, these are sort of the mantras that we live and work by and that our colleagues across the country who are engaged in this work have found sort of, you know, inspirational and motivating for them in terms of the approach to the work. We say, "Community schools is all about relationships." So none of this work happens without relationships of trust, collaboration, communication. Everything has to be negotiated all the time. So we, I'm sure this is true for almost any work anyone does, including, you know, the work here of this group, but that's a really important piece. And most importantly, for community schools to work, the partners have to have the word "yes" written in their hearts. And that's because this work is hard work. I mean, you know, this is not, it sounds great, it looks great, and when it works well, which it often does, it's an amazing thing to see, and you get the great results that we shared. But it is hard work, and so it requires people coming back to the core mission. Why are we doing this? What do we hope to achieve? And we're going to do whatever it takes to get there. So that's sort of the end of our formal presentation. We would love to just be able to engage you in any questions you have, comments, just a broader conversation with you.
Can we members say comments or questions? Jennifer?
Thanks for your presentation. I feel like we've heard a lot of this in different ways before, but it's helpful to kind of have it packaged. And I have a question about the finance report that you mentioned. And when you talk about the 10-to-1 or 14-to-1 dollar return, can you elaborate a little bit more on what those costs or savings actually might be in terms of what services are saving money?
Sure. I mean, I think the overall, so the study looked at several of our community schools in New York City, the Children's Aid Society, community schools. And really, it was looking at sort of, over the long term, you know, sort of the investment that you make upfront in young people as being a wise investment in terms of if you didn't support those kinds of services and supports when children are young, the kinds of needs that they would have and the financial result of those needs going forward. And so again, you know, we can, we are happy to make available that report to you so you can kind of look into the details. But the kinds of supports that we provide in our schools are the kinds of things that you saw in here. Health, mental health supports, academic supports for students who might need extra tutoring, for example, so that they don't fall behind academically and so that they're able to graduate on time and for years in high school, those kinds of things. And so those are the kinds of supports that are provided upfront in community schools, beginning, even in some of our schools, we start working with, you know, with moms when they're pregnant and start working even on support services for, you know, for children before they're born and their early years and so forth, right on through. So that kind of pipeline that Lucas described.
And secondly, then, I guess, can you elaborate a little bit more on your role in this project? I mean, I understand kind of the philosophical support, but what concrete? I've heard that you've worked with staff, but I'm curious what other deliverables, I guess.
Sure. So again, you know, we do this, so we're working here in Emeryville. We also do similar work with initiatives across the country. And really, when we're brought in to work with folks, we're there to work sort of from soup to nuts on developing community schools. So we've been, members of our team have been coming out and working here in Emeryville for, I think, about, actually about 10 years, sort of on and off at different points in the project. So we, when we come out, initially, it's really to help folks understand, you know, what the strategy is, or, you know, what, based on other work that's been done around the country, what, you know, the best lessons, lessons learned from other initiatives. But then beyond that, we're actually able to help work on the ground with folks on the ground in that particular place, how this strategy is going to translate for you. So we like to say that, you know, community schools as a strategy, it isn't a program. That's, you know, why we, so it's not a program where we're going to come in and say, "Here's exactly what you do, step one, step two, step three, you know. This is how we did it in New York, here's how it's going to..." No. It's really about, here's what we know from other places that have done this work in terms of, you know, what works well, what are some of the core components you want to include? The governance, there's a lot that we've learned around how to sort of govern and direct these kinds of initiatives that, you know, helps make them more successful or less successful. And we can help share those strategies here with you and help you translate how those might look for your own community here. Another piece of that, which I think I mentioned in the earlier slide, is that we do a lot of work around needs and asset assessments. So we can help folks in different communities look at what existing data they have, help them sort of find what other kinds of data points they might want to look like, look at, to help them understand what a community school strategy, what kinds of needs you would want that strategy to address, and how that strategy can build on the particular assets of your community so that it can be successful for you here.
Is all this work funded by the Children's Aid Society?
So in New York, and our work in New York City, are you asking?
Yeah.
Right. So in New York City, when we started this work about 20 years ago, we were largely supporting it through private, initially through private money that we raised. But over the years, that changed so that we were much more working with public monies. So as, you know, this kind of, there's been more support at both the city, the state, and the federal level for this kind of work. And so, for example, there, the 21st Century Fund, federal funds for out-of-school time programs are often drawn on by communities to help fund the after-school portion of this kind of work. Early childhood, you know, we're able, again, because it's an integrated strategy, you're able to draw in funds for Head Start, early Head Start and Head Start, for example. So those kinds of things. So this, in New York City, it shifted much more to public dollars, although we still raise private money as well. Do you want anything else?
So I'm a little unclear here. So are you going to be continuing to work with Emeryville on the ECL?
We would, we certainly hope so. Again, that will be, you know...
And who would fund that?
The work that we've been doing, you recall, I'm not...
I don't know if your mic's on.
The green light's on.
The, I'm trying to recall the exact timeframe, but it was probably a year and a half ago or so, maybe even two years ago, the City Schools Committee authorized some program development work. Children's Aid was one of the consulting groups that was part of that program development work, and they're still continuing under that arrangement that we made with them whenever it was, a year and a half or so ago. So that's how they're with us now. They're here as consultants to our process. And Sarah, I think, did a good job of outlining how it is that we can continue to use them. They can help us think about ways to structure the work, to develop the cooperative and collaborative relationships between the city programs and the school programs in a kind of a deeper and more detailed way. So that's what we've been using them to do.
And where specifically are the present funds coming from? What pocket?
I believe that, Nora, I'd have to verify this, but my memory says that the program development funds came from MOU2.
Could we put this for discussion on the December, to bring back, to refresh all our minds what it is we're doing here and how we are paying for it and with what funds? And then following on that, would we be able to get a copy of your Economic Analysis Book that you showed? If you could give one to Sabrina for the City Council, and then who would take it for the school district? But that's something we want to take a look at, too. Those are, those are very useful figures if we can tie them somehow to what we're doing here in this city.
Terrific. And Lucas reminded me, I should also mention that another piece of work that we've done with community schools initiatives nationally is around sustainability. So we do a lot of, you know, we can do a lot of work with you all around, you know, initially how you're funding this project, but really looking long-term in terms of the ECL, how, you know, how that would look going forward. So that would, of course, draw on the Social Return on Investment Study, but also on work we've done with many other initiatives around long-term sustainability of this work. And there are some really innovative ways that folks have done that.
I'd just like to make a comment. I'm a real fan of the Children's Aid Society. I've been for longer than you two have been alive.
So I gave Sabrina two copies of the Social Return on Investment Study there, as well as two of books that explain our work at the Children's Aid Society around community schools. They're also both available on our website, so you don't, and we can also send you as many copies as you'd like, so.
Yes. I actually have two questions. The first question is, since you've been involved with the district for a certain amount of time, do you personally, at this time, have any recommendations that you could give to us based on your observations over the years of what we may need to continue the work?
Sure. I mean, I think a couple of things come to mind. First, I just want to say that, you know, we've been really excited about the work you're doing here because, again, we think it's really sort of cutting-edge work and that you're taking this strategy not just to a school or looking just in terms of a group of schools in a district, but really as a full community strategy. And so we think that's very exciting, and we actually think that, not to put any pressure on you, but we think that the work you do here will be instructive to other folks around the country, you know, who might be looking to do something similar. I think a couple of things. One, Lucas mentioned the community school coordinator, you know, how key that person is. So I think as you continue to develop this initiative, it'll be really important to think about that role for the ECL. So, you know, we're talking about a community school coordinator, but for you all, it would really be an ECL coordinator. Someone, again, who would have a broad sense of the program, services, and supports and partners for the community, and can really help look not only at individual children, but at families, at community members, and be able to have that sort of big picture and have those relationships with the different parts of your community and the different service providers to be able to do that coordination and alignment, which is really what makes or breaks a strategy like this. I think the other pieces around governance I mentioned earlier. I know, I know that you're working through on the Joint Occupancy Agreement, sort of what that governance will look like. And I think that that's really important work and key that you're doing that upfront because, again, it's complex work, and you need to be sure you have the right partners at the table and spaces for, you know, going down the line. You probably will identify other partners that you want to be at the table that might not be yet. So I think that that's going to be a key piece, and that's certainly something that we can share more ideas with you on, but that's key. And I mentioned sustainability also, critical to the work. You know, it's, you're in that early, you're getting something off the ground, you're going to, you know, there's quite a bit that's going to happen in the next few years. And I think it'll be critical to look not only at sort of a five-year type of timeframe for sustainability, but beyond that, how this is going to stay healthy and alive for years to come.
Any other questions or comments?
I got one more. And can you give us some examples of how you involve parent, your parent engagement, some of those components, and how you get those parents engaged, families engaged in their outcomes?
I don't know how to mic. You want to say something? Okay. So a couple of things. One, I mentioned sort of the needs and assets assessment work. So I think that from the beginning, and I know you've been doing this here already, really engaging families and community members from the beginning in terms of, you know, the vision, what kind, you know, what would they want out of, say, a community school, or in this case, an ECL? And I know you've done quite a bit of that here. I think that's critical because we've seen initiatives backfire when they sort of think, you know, someone else who's not a parent or family thinks, "Oh, well, we know what parents and families want and need, so we're going to do this and have this and have this." And quite often, those, you know, backfire utterly. So I think, you know, involving parents as stakeholders from the beginning is really important. And I think, as Lucas mentioned, sort of making, you know, making the community school or the ECL really responsive, ongoing to parents' changing needs and families' needs because what families might need today in Emeryville might look different in two years, three years, five years. So there needs to be that sort of ongoing dialogue and sort of structures in place to keep families very much engaged in this process. And then within our community schools, you know, family engagement ranges from education, sort of, you know, in our schools, for example, computer classes, ESL classes, you know, recreational programs, you know, physical education, as well as leadership programs. Because quite often, we start with those kinds of services as a way to make the school a welcoming place for families where they want to come and feel comfortable. But then it's really about engaging families as leaders in their own schools, and so creating those kinds of opportunities for parent leadership and parent advocacy.
So it seems that it's a little bit of programming, school programs and curriculum, but I kind of hear also, you know, this community school coordinator would be a person who could also kind of infiltrate those families, get them involved, hear, you know, hear their comments, concerns, issues.
Absolutely. Hundred percent. So that person definitely needs to be someone who knows the community well, the families, and, you know, has those relationships with them. Lucas, do you want to...
Well, just on that, and also, so knows them, but certainly works as a bridge to the school, so to the principal communicates what the community school coordinator is finding out about what the needs are, to city services, to everyone who's at the table. So that, it's really key also for the community school coordinator, director, whatever it might be called, to be at the table in all those different areas. So it's not just a one-way flow of information so that it's shared, and also so that the perspectives of every other person are brought to the table.
Just to give you one little example on that, in community schools, where in New York, for example, and other places, it's critical that the community school director sits at government, in governance structures within the school. Like in New York City, we have a school leadership team. I'm sure there's a similar structure here. That they're at that table. Because again, if they're not at the table with the school and other partners, they don't know what, you know, what the needs are of the different constituents, nor are they abreast of the various programs and services, which they need to be to do that coordination work effectively.
Yeah, it's funny, because listening to you, I mean, being a small district, you know, staff have to wear a lot of hats, you know. You can't really sometime, you know, carve out, you know, positions and hire people in because of financial reasons. Because I'm hearing you, and I'm thinking, you know, Mr. Miller, Roy, has done a little bit of all of this.
Yeah.
You know, as well as, you know, worked on the facilities, the architect, facilities manager. So I can really see where a coordinator can be of value when you really talk about, and have a dedicated person for that position, that can really bring value to link all these pieces together.
Yeah, I can underscore that piece again, just for lessons learned, you know, when we've seen places where they have sort of a part-time coordinator. It's really hard to do that level of coordination and integration, unless it's your full-time focus. It really, and, you know, so that's, again, that's just from our work with many other places. I would, I would make that point.
So I have a comment. Well, first of all, thanks for coming cross-country to work with us. Those cross-country flights can be kind of hard. So I appreciate your work and for recognizing that what we're about is a little different than full-service community schools. It's actually full-service community. And so with that, and, and given that you, it just so happens this way, we're a little more integrated and coordinated than we happen to be, but tonight, we have three City Council members sitting side by side. We try to intersperse. But that being said, there's a demographic statistic that is true at the last census. I don't know what the next census will look like. Hopefully, it'll change. But 51% of our households are households of one person. So. What?
That was 65.
No, one, 51.
51?
51%. So an absolute majority of the number of households here are, are one person living alone. And certainly, my leitmotif in my public service has been about building community. And the more we talk about community and not necessarily family units here, then I think when EC, when ECCL opens, that it is my hope that there'll be something that will appeal to everybody living in town across the lifespan.
I'm sure that we both, we all agree on that. Also, I think that we like to think that by, by doing this, maybe people will stay beyond the point that they're just single people living in the community and want to raise their families here, you know, and I don't know.
Well, we're doing our best to try to get family-friendly housing in, but this, that's a slow process.
Absolutely.
And we haven't been very successful, because we're in the urban core, and there've been some challenges around that kind of development. But, but that being said, I, I know your, your organizing principle is around education. And I think my organizing principle is, one of the people here is around building community. So.
And I just, and on that, you know, we, historically, the Children's Aid Society is a social service agency. I'm a social worker. And, and the work that we do is, is, has always been about building communities. We entered this about 20 years ago. The Children's Aid Society is 163 years old. So not to say that we weren't doing work in education prior to that, but the main gist of our, our work has always been around community building, whatever the needs of that community might be. Yes, we're the Children's Aid Society, so, you know, certainly a sub-context of our focus is always on children and families, but I certainly understand and agree with what you're saying.
So now, so now we can talk the same language, because I'm a social worker, too.
I'm a teacher, so.
But, but your coordinator role sounds awfully similar to that of a case manager.
It is, it's, it's a case manager on a broader level, you know, so, so that the community school director, or whatever it may be, is not necessarily the person who's doing the specific individual work with those kids, but it is the person who's, who's knows, gathering all of the resources in the community, knows where everything's, knows what the different needs are of all those kids, but it's not the person doing direct counseling, for instance, with a child or something like that. There's, there's other ways to bring that in.
It seems like they're doing more referrals.
It sounds like an executive director meets social worker.
Yes, and which is why, actually, in our, in our schools, our, our, our community school coordinators are a range of social workers, educators, MBAs, I mean, we have sort of a different, you know, because it is sort of this complex role. And again, I think for, since we're talking about your context of the ECL, I think it's important to say again that this individual would not only be someone who, you know, knows individual kids and, but, but again, has to have that broader perspective to be able to know different constituents in your community. Not, not just children, but families and, and community members that don't have children, or have grown children, or, you know, they're going to need a broader sense of, of your community.
And what I'm hearing is that there will be more of a referral-type of individual who will, who would refer the services that are needed to families in the community, and kind of giving them that pathway to what they need, the services that they need.
Yeah, I think that's a good, you know, and again, it's, sometimes it may be a referral. It may be even in time, sort of thinking about creating new types of services and programs that don't currently exist, or could exist, but are sort of, you know, broken a little bit here, a little bit there. How could we bring those together to, to do something in a, you know, a smarter way, not only in terms of resources, but in terms of quality of service as well?
I think John has some things. I have a couple, too.
Do you have any research that you've done on the, the schools? How many did you say you've now gotten your?
Well, in New York City, we have 16, but there are thousands across the country.
At least the ones in New York City and elsewhere, if you have it, but sort of pre-post-community school analysis in terms of student outcomes, health outcomes, graduation outcomes, where you can tell whether or not the community school intervention, as it were, actually made a difference in improving.
Yeah, so I mean, again, it's sort of a growing body of research, but I would say the most recent, and, you know, folks are very excited about sort of the research coming out of Cincinnati Public Schools, you know, so Cincinnati, every, every school in Cincinnati Public Schools is a community school, every one of their schools. So they took this on, and actually, they're also a very good sort of case study to look at in terms of starting, they started their initiative through community engagement. It was a sort of a deep level of community engagement, similar to what you've done here, I think, actually. But they, they have, if you go to, actually to their district website, they've had some tremendous outcomes that folks around the country are very excited about, because when you do something on that scale, you know, to that level, you know, you really can take a look at, at some outcomes. So they've had some terrific outcomes, certainly academic outcomes, but others as well. And we can share more, you know, our, some of the research that we showed you quickly about our own schools, found, again, not only sort of the academic outcomes, but youth development factors, indicators, you know, real increase in those, health, and some of the other things that you spoke about.
They fund public educational up better than California does, too. On a per pupils basis.
You mean Cincinnati? Also, right. Oh, right. So, and as well, so if, you know, you can look at the Cincinnati research and the Children's Aid and other research on community schools at the Coalition for Community Schools website. The Coalition for Community Schools is a national policy and advocacy organization around community schools, which I know some of you have been to their conferences and so forth. And so they have a whole section on their website that has the research I've shared with you and other initiatives research as well.
Great. The other question I had is how, in your experience typically, how many of these community schools, or what proportion of them, are K-12 community schools? Like, we're envisioning here versus some subset of grades?
I mean, I would have to say it's, it's all across, every, every, every one, you know, yes, and all of them. So we, you know, we, we work with community schools that are, you know, strictly K to five, that are middle schools, that are high schools, K to eight, you know, across the spectrum. So I think, you know, folks have done this work in, in all of those types of configurations.
I just wanted to expand on that a little bit. Certainly, when we started in New York City, we started with two, wait, we started with an elementary school in Washington Heights and a middle school in Washington Heights, and there are feeder schools, because the idea was to, to, you know, have the, the kids go from this community school to this community school, and then to the high school. In New York City, there's very few K-12 schools. So in New York City, our work has been more focused on elementary, middle, and/or high school. But around the country, initiatives have, have been very different, so there's been all across the board.
Well, from some sectors, that, in our community, there's a tension about co-locating the, the high school with the K-8 school. And so I guess I'm curious to know if you've seen any basis to have concern about a K-12 community school? And conversely, have you seen benefits of a K-12 arrangement that you don't necessarily get?
I think both of us would agree, and in, in New York City.
Agree on what?
We have a campus that has, that's, you know, fully, a sort of a full spectrum of, of kids on one campus. I think we see that as a benefit. In our, in our experience with community schools there, you know, it opens up so many opportunities for, you know, cross-peer tutoring, cross-peer programming, mentoring, you know, of older kids with younger kids. More recently, we, we've been involved in New York City with, with work around older kids being attendance buddies for slightly younger peers that are having, you know, trouble getting to school on time each day, and sort of there's some real benefits to that. So I think we see it as, as fully a benefit in terms of many more opportunities than maybe, certainly there are challenges, but we think the opportunities are, outweigh those. And in, and a community school strategy is a terrific way to maximize those benefits because of the way that it's set up, to be integrated. And I just want to say, we often talk about, you know, the importance of not just looking at these programs and services sort of as being co-located. So, you know, in a community school, it's certainly a benefit that you'd have some programs and services in your ECL that they be, you know, in one location. But for us, the magic is really about that integration of those services. So it isn't just, you know, now we have everything here on one block or whatever. It's that those folks are talking to each other and working together, and coordinating together. And that would lend itself to your example about the older kids and younger kids really working together in some deeper ways.
Any research on that, the K-12 community school model, or the benefits of?
I don't know if, I don't know, I mean, there, I, I, we can certainly, yeah, we can certainly look into it for you. I don't know that there's specifically research on that, and sort of that aspect of it, but there's certainly tons of research that community schools draw on in terms of the benefits of peer-to-peer, you know, kind of older and younger students working together, and, yeah.
And when Hay and Kim was here, she did a whole presentation to the school board that cited all sorts of studies from literature. I can dig those up and, and get those to you again.
That'd be great. And lastly, as you noted, our model here is one that's actually both trying to bring wraparound services and a, and a full-service support to a K-12 school, and also, at the same time, you know, buttress and build the bonds of the community, and provide wellness, and, and, you know, potentially job training and other, other things that will satisfy the whole community, a library, a cap. Have you seen that kind of full-service community, community model that, that Member Atkins was talking about?
Sure.
What, what successes or failures, or should we?
Again, I, I think that, I mean, we showed that slide sort of quickly, but I think this idea of, of place-based strategies, you know, is really taking hold. So, you know, we're certainly in New York City, an example of, you know, a sort of famous example of a, of a place-based strategy is the Harlem Children's Own, Jeffrey Canada's work. And more and more around the country, folks are engaging in sort of this, you know, taking these ideas to a community as opposed to just a school. And even in New York City, of this past year, Children's Aid, we're actually embarking on a, on a community, a place-based strategy, and in particular, neighborhood in the Bronx, where, again, you, the schools in that community will be community schools, but the community itself will operate, you know, in this strategy. So I think that's really the, the future of this work. Again, you know, I don't think anyone's doing it exactly, exactly the way you're doing it, where it, it really is your entire community. Like, again, in New York, it's a neighborhood in New York City that's going to be a, you know, that's why we say what you're doing here is exciting for us, because it really is, it's really going, you know, kind of be an example. It's going to lead the way on a, a particular way to address this work. But certainly, there's the promised neighborhoods and place-based strategies. Collective impact is another, you know, kind of way people are talking about this work now. There's really good research about the benefits of working in that way, not only fiscally, but also in terms of community health and community strength. Please.
So I will state that, as I, I went to a GEAR Up conference, I think, a couple of years ago in New York, and I happened to visit one of the schools in Washington Heights. And the, the group that I actually spoke to were the adults who benefited from the community school. So I would say, because Emeryville's so small, we should actually look at it as a neighborhood. So some of our neigh, our city is smaller than some of the neighborhoods in New York, because I'm sure a lot of you know that. So when we think about the neighborhood schools, we need, that's, I think that's what we should compare ourselves to. So in, in, in the, in the Family Resource Center, they addressed adults, like job training. So many, while many of them were parents, a lot of them had adult children who were young adults. So they had the job training. Their parent, their parents, where seniors also came. So they talked about the, the field trips that those parents take to Washington, the seniors take to Washington DC. Or some of them who have never been out of their borough, that they will take field trips. So I think there are plenty, plenty of opportunities where, if we look at the schools in New York, the neighborhood schools as our city schools, then we can actually do, have plenty of opportunities to look at those studies.
That's a great point. And in that same school, we had like an abuelas, a grandmother's group, and, you know, because we had a group of grandmothers that had, you know, at that point, they were, they, they wanted support around, how do I work with my grandchild? So there was, you know, so again, from doula program was something else that we started. So thank you. That's a great, I think that's a great way to look at it.
Great. Thank you very much. Oh, you've.
I just had a couple more.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I, I love all of these ideas, and I'm a little concerned, because I see it as additional expenses that we, we're building a community center to try and consolidate expenses on the school side, certainly with the K-12 and other, and I'm not sure how much of this is built into the operations plan that we are currently working on. And so that's kind of a financial question, and, you know, we can always say, oh, we can apply for grants, et cetera, but I'm, I'm thinking of more sustainable, I think is the word you used. And I'm wondering about capacity. I'm wondering about layers in terms of, you know, is that person who could be a coordinator-director currently in our midst? Or is that person, is this on top? Because everyone here has full-time jobs already, right? And so it's hard to imagine really how that works. It sounds fabulous, but then, you know, we're here to really figure out the nuts and bolts, and really the dollars and cents, and, and what that would be translated into. So I'm thinking of very practical, and, yeah.
Based on it, so are you thinking that the city would have to somehow pay for this individual? Is that the concern from a financial standpoint?
The city or the schools. I feel like both, both the city and schools don't have extra money sitting around in terms of operations. So, yeah. Somehow, do you have extra money sitting around in the school district? No?
Well, based on what you're saying, I guess we don't.
But, well, I mean, I don't know. I'm just thinking that it's, it's, what I'm trying to say is, I don't think I need to be sold on any of the philosophical benefits. I feel very strongly after teaching in the public schools for 13 years, but I want to know how to make this happen, and I want to know how much you, as consultants, can do that and help us figure it out, because we can't pay consultants on and on and on either.
And, and we want to put ourselves out of business. That's sort of what we like to do. So that's, that's how we achieve our goals.
So I guess I'm thinking that really hardcore and practical information that we can get from you, and I, when I say we, I guess I mean the staff, really, and to bring it back to us. So that's, that's one of my thoughts. And then specifically about governance, which has been raised, you know, we're not just a school district, and that's unique, and it's tricky, and it's hard to negotiate, as you said, and negotiations are important. So I'm curious if you have worked directly with city staff and city councils as well to incorporate and fold everyone's perspectives into real workable programs as well, strategies, I guess.
So, so just to say a little bit, you know, again, on the sustainability piece that you brought up earlier, I will say, I mean, it'll sound like a broken record, but, you know, that coordinator position obviously is essential. It's a, it's a, in our opinion, it's a make or break as far as the success of this. And we do feel, from our experience, it needs to be a dedicated person. We have seen initiatives kind of repurposed, like look at people maybe that they have, and, you know, sometimes it's like it can be something that, you know, that they're already doing, that they expand, but, but it really needs to be a full-time focus for that person. And by the way, we've seen lots of different innovative ways of financing that position, you know, so we can definitely help with that. And as far as the governance piece, the short answer is yes. When we work with, you know, initiatives, we've seen initiatives where the community school is, is a strategy that really starts, you know, starts with and is driven by the district. We've seen communities where it's a city initiative, city government initiative, and we've seen combinations of the two. So that's, we can definitely bring experiences to bear from, from those other models, to be able to share with you in terms of looking at what you're doing.
And I just want to reiterate, I think, what Member Atkins said, which is that we have, we have clear needs of our current school community, and I think, I would say that we have done a good job engaging the school community. But we have a huge portion of our community that is not at all engaged in our school district because of the demographics we have, the number of students who are not living in Emeryville, who attend our schools, the number of us in Emeryville with children who unfortunately don't have our kids in the school in town. And so I think it's really critical, and I can't remember where we heard it exactly, but the percentage of people who'd never heard of ECL in Emeryville was like 97%, or, you know, there was, I can't remember what that number was.
It was about 95%.
95%, very high. So how do you engage the non-school community? When you're talking about a community school or a full-service school, people might say, oh, well, that's not about me. And I, I think that's a, maybe it's not unique, but it's a special circumstance that we have that's really important for Emeryville.
Right. And I mean, again, I think it's about here in particular, but, you know, really, it's really about thinking about for those various constituents, you know, what are their, what are the things that they would like to see that aren't in their community currently, that would make them feel better and more engaged and connected to their community, and then looking at how the ECL can, can answer that. I mean, you really do have to look at your different stakeholders and constituents, and where do they see, they have to be able to see themselves in the ECL, a place for themselves. Some people will be more deeply engaged, you know, you might have a family that is, you know, taking advantage of lots of programs and services. You might have somebody who. You might have somebody who, you know, really enjoys this particular, you know, aspect activity that's offered, or experiences that's offered, but it's like more of an occasional thing. But it's, I think it's going to be critical for you that, that, that every stakeholder sees something for themselves in it. And, you know, and it's not that different from our schools. I mean, we often say, like, when we, when we start community schools in districts, we've gone to places where we've had families say, well, for example, I don't, I don't want to use the clinic, like, I have a doctor that I like, like, I'm not interested. And we say, no, no, it's not, you don't have to use the clinic. It's not about that. You know, if that's something that's useful to you, if a school-based health clinic is something that meets your needs, great, but no, you don't have to, you can, you can, you know, you, you're going to find the entry point that meets your particular interest and need.
You know, I think it's something that the school boys have been talking about for some time, and it boils down to communication. You know, communicating to the community what the school district has, what the city has, what services they offer. And I think that's one of the major reasons why 95% of the residents in Emeryville may not know about our schools. So, you know, with you giving the recommendation of some, a point person who can connect all those dots together, I think that's why, for me, hearing it is so important. Because if we want to get, if we want to be a full-service community school, we have to get out and let the community know what we're doing. A lot of times, governing, government agencies, they expect people to come to them. And I think, you know, in, in, in this conversation, what I'm hearing is that to really make this work, we have to get out to our community. And, you know, we have to promote ourselves. And that's something right now, to be honest, we're not doing well. So I think to have a point person of some magnitude that can, you know, bring those nexus together, it can really help not only the district, but it can also help the community know exactly what we're doing, and make them a part, you know, of this full-service community school.
And by the way, that's also a key piece of sustainability. So when we, when we do sustainability work, you know, we talk not only about sort of the financial and fiscal aspects of that, strategic planning and so forth, we also talk about key champions that, you know, you need to have from the beginning, key champions in different, you know, parts of your community that will take this idea and really, you know, not only speak to it, but fundraise for it, bring other resources to it, you know, engage others in it. That's a key piece of sustainability, so I'm glad you brought that up.
Well, and just on that, I mean, you're really in a, in a great position because, you know, it's still going to be, you know, I guess it's 2015 at least is scheduled. So, so right now, say, if there, there is an opportunity to bring in this coordinator person or something now to do this work, you have some time, the benefits of really, really, really pushing that work forward for the next two years. And not, not just saying nothing's going to happen in that time, because there's things going on right now, and all, all of these things are going on right now, just not in, in one location. So the work is happening, that's really important, but there's, there's a really good opportunity to also use this time to really continue that deep reach into the community.
And let me make this clear to the committee, you know, from my perspective, any dollars we have should be spent in the classroom. I mean, that's my top priority. But with that being said, if we're going to really make this vision come to fruition, we have to do certain things to make it happen. And if this is a position that is key in making, you know, this community of full-service community schools, then we, we have to invest in it, you know?
Nora?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment on the fact that over 95% of the people don't know about ECL. We have to understand what this community has built. There's a lot of diverse little communities within this community. And when, the, but there's a very high support for education.
Oh, yes, for sure.
When school funds come up, and that, people put their money where their mouth is.
That's right.
And so we have this underlying understanding in this city. Almost 70% of the people have a BA degree or, or greater.
Right.
So we're talking about an educated community.
Exactly.
That understands the value of, of education.
That's right.
We have that base support. And I agree with you, Miguel. I think we should focus, first, you, you don't want to open like a big extravaganza, like you're opening a casino up in Nap or someplace like that. But you start with improving the educational opportunities of the children. It will naturally grow and flower. And I, I'd like to make one other comment in terms of, we beat ourselves up because